Everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to let everyone know that there is an interpreter here for interpretation for anyone who needs it. Please raise your hand and just go to the back. Can we get a roll call for attendance?
Mr. Hernandez?
Present.
Mr. Oregan?
Present.
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Present.
Ms. Valderas?
Present.
Dr. Neville?
Present.
Ms. Covas Caraballo? Ms. Alfaro is absent. Ms. Cabral is absent. And Ms. Enriquez is absent. Six present, three absent.
Thank you. I will pass this on to Dr. Abada now for our awards section, my favorite part.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. This is always our favorite school committee because we get to celebrate so many of our staff, our students, and it's just a nice way to end the year. So I'm very excited to start with our student of the year presentation. So we're going to start with our first student who, from the Berkowitz School, so if we could have the principal or assistant principal come up, our teacher, and our student of the year at the Berkowitz is Selma Sadebany.
One thing that I forgot to announce, and my apologies. We're going to call up each student for, to be presented with their certificate from the school committee member, and then we're going to have them take a picture with their family and their principals and so forth, and then they can sit down again. Once we've given out all the student of the year awards, we will have them all come up, and then the entire committee will take a picture with the whole group, okay? Thank you.
Words that she wants to share about how special you are.
Selma was nominated to be student of the year for the Berkowitz School with support from all of her teachers. She is a happy, hardworking student who is always responsible and prepared for class. Selma is determined to succeed, and she never gives up, no matter the challenge. She puts forth her best effort in everything she does and demonstrates a strong commitment to both learning and growth. Beyond her academic efforts, Selma is a role model in how she treats others. She consistently shows respect to both her teachers and classmates and approaches every interaction with both kindness and empathy. Selma demonstrates excellent collaboration skills when working in groups. She has embodied all five of the school's core values and also is an active member in Girls on the Run, where she continues to grow as a confident and compassionate leader. Selma is the perfect candidate for student of the year, and I am extremely proud of her.
Okay. Our next student is from the Kelly, and if our principal, from the Kelly, Ms. Lineweaver, hence teacher, teachers. And the student is Valeria Castillo.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Lineweaver, the proud principal of the Kelly School, and I'm here just to say how proud we are of her and introduce two of her teachers.
My name is Siobhan Loving. I've been Valeria's English teacher in 4th grade.
And my name is Mira Hernandez. I'm the Spanish teacher of Valeria.
On the first day of 4th grade, Valeria arrived at school with a beautiful homemade poster[1024.96][1024.96]introducing herself and expressing her excitement to get to know her class, and we knew from that moment that Valeria was going to stand out from the crowd. We chose Valeria as the student of the year because of how she exemplifies the Kelly School motto of empathy, effort, and excellence. Valeria shows empathy by welcoming new students into her class and caring for others. She shows effort in every area of her learning. This year, she wrote essays in both English and Spanish, aced countless math tests, and increased her English reading score by 285%. She also recently completed a 5K with Girls on the Run. Valeria's excellence shines in her biliteracy. To excel in one language is wonderful, but to excel in two is a superpower. I have many memories from this year of handing Valeria an assignment and hearing her say, "I feel confident about this one." Valeria, we feel confident that you will continue to work hard, support the people around you, and shine your light wherever you go. We are all proud of you. Congratulations.
Okay, our next student is from the Hooks School. So if the Hooks principal and teachers can come forward. And our student of the year is Aleah Trotman.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Crowley. I have the proud honor to introduce our student of the year, Aleah Trotman, and to tell you a little bit more about why she's such an amazing Hooks student are her teachers, Ms. Caseta and Ms. Apollo.
Hello, my name is Ms. Caseta, and this is Ms. Apollo. We are Aleah's teachers this year for 4th grade. So let's dive in. There's so much I could say, but so limited time. We've had the absolute pleasure of being Aleah's teachers this year at the Hooks School. Aleah truly embodies the characteristics of a model Hooks student. Throughout her four years at the Hooks, she has been respectful, responsible, and cooperative always. Aleah has such a bright and infectious personality and just radiates positivity. Whether helping a friend, leading a group project, or quietly supporting somebody who needs it, Aleah is always there. She's the first to lend a hand and even a pencil from her own pencil case without hesitation. Her effort and motivation are contagious. She uplifts others and she inspires them to do their best simply by being herself. Aleah's dedication and hard work doesn't just stop in the classroom. Outside of school, Aleah is deeply dedicated to her dance group, Funk Phenomenon. You can find her dancing for the Celtics. Whether she's rehearsing after school, performing at a Celtics game, or traveling to New York for a competition or show, she always shows up the next day ready to learn with her homework complete and a smile on her face.
When, when we asked Aleah's classmates why she deserves this honor, many of them enthusiastically said that she is kind to everyone no matter what and always helps them with their schoolwork. One student shared that the reason why Aleah deserves student of the year is every time someone is feeling sick, sad, or any type of emotion, she is always there for you, and she makes me feel better when I'm sad. Aleah has been such a beloved member of the Hooks School community over the years. We know that everything that she has shown us here, her compassion, dedication, and positive spirit, will carry her far in middle school and beyond. Aleah, we are so proud of you. Congratulations.
Okay. Our next student of the year is from the Sokolaski School. So if we could have our principal, Mr. Cambs, and teacher, teachers come up? Nope. Okay. So the student of the year from the Sokolaski School is Maite Martinez Garcia.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. My name is Camilo Machado. I'm the proud principal of the Sokolaski School, and I'm joined by Ms. Drew, which is Maite's teacher in 4th grade. So I'm, we are very proud to recognize Maite Martinez Garcia as our student of the year this school year. Maite joined our school in 2nd grade in our foundational classroom, and she came in with very limited English proficiency. She worked really, really hard, and she learned how to read, write, she learned how to do math while also improving her English skills. In 3rd grade, she transitional, she transitioned into a general education classroom and continued growing every single day academically and personally, every step of the way. So this year in 4th grade, Maite truly found her voice. Her teachers describe her as humble, kind, determined, and a quiet leader. She always pushes herself to do her best, she treats others with respect, and she lifts up those around her. Maite's journey is the definition of what it means to strive, succeed, and soar, just as our motto at the Sokolaski School, not only in schoolwork but also in character. She truly embodies what it means to be a Sokolaski shark. We are very proud of you, Maite. Congratulations.
Our next student is from the Brown Middle School. So if we could have our amazed, our principal from Brown, Ms. Katie Cook, and teach, is there a teacher worth seeing? No, okay. So the student of the year at the Brown Middle School is Ashley Hernandez.
Good evening. I'm Katie Cook, the proud principal of Brown Middle School, and on behalf of our staff and 8th grade team, it's an honor to recognize Ashley Hernandez as our student of the year. The daughter of Salvadoran parents and born here in the United States, Ashley has been a dedicated member of our Caminos dual-language program since 1st grade and now graduates 8th grade, truly living out the Browns' core values of community, identity, growth, rigor, and joy every day. She lifts others up, offering help freely and often, even when there's no grade attached. She embraces and celebrates who she is, a proud bilingual, biliterate, Salvadoran student leader and advocate, and represents our school with authenticity and pride. She consistently challenges herself academically in both Spanish and English, always striving for excellence and deep understanding. She is always evolving, not just academically, but as a confident, respected leader and person deeply committed to making a difference in her community. She brings light and positivity into every space she enters. Her energy and smile are uplifting, and she truly makes our school a joyful place to learn and grow. Congratulations, Ashley. We can't wait to see all that you will accomplish next.
Okay. Our next student is from the Morris Segal Middle School. So if our Mr. Talbot and his, and teachers from the Morris Segal Middle School could come up. And our student is Xander Jose.
Good evening. My name is Mike Talbot. I'm the principal at the Clark Avenue Middle School, and this time of year I always enjoy when I get the email from Veronica that it's time to pick student of the year. I then reach out to my 8th grade team and say, "Let me know who you decide," and it is not an easy... is not an easy decision. We have a lot of well-deserving students that could easily have been in this spot, but I'm going to turn it over to two of my 8th grade teachers, Ms. Metzke and Ms. Perella, to speak a few words about Xander.
Good evening, I'm Mrs. Metzke. Xander is a model of empathy and inclusivity. In a time when many teenagers retreat into their own digital worlds, Xander stands out for his genuine connection with others. His teachers have observed him celebrate, welcome, and include fellow students, especially those he doesn't know well or isn't naturally close to. Whether he's chatting about a video game or walking through the hallway, he makes the effort to acknowledge others by name, offering kindness, recognition, and a sense of belonging. In the classroom, that same warmth shines through. He approaches learning with enthusiasm, lifts others with encouragement, and brings a spirit of curiosity and positivity that enriches every class he's in. For someone just 14-years-old, this level of awareness and warmth is both rare and remarkable. The 8th grade team at the Clark Avenue Middle School is proud to recognize Xander, not only for his achievements, but for the heart, integrity, and spirit he brings to our school community.
Okay, if the Principal from the Wright Academy, Mr. Myers, and any teachers that will be presenting the Student of the Year. Okay, our Student of the Year at the Wright is Arwa Ait Shaib.
Hi, everybody, I'm Nate Myers, I'm the Principal at the Wright. This is my first year at the Wright, and I can say before I turn it over to our teachers to speak about Arwa, that Arwa was one of the first students to welcome me, and with her natural warmth, made me feel really included right from the very start. And I shared that with her family today, and I think it just speaks to who she is as a person, and who she will be, but many other great qualities that they'll share, but I just wanted to share that. Congrats, Arwa.
Hi, I'm Mr. Bailey, I am Arwa's ELA teacher. It is not very often that you meet a student like Arwa. She's ready to help others at the drop of a hat, and she seeks out the most difficult problems possible, tackling advanced problems with ease. She's thoughtful, inquisitive, relatable, and reliable at all times. She's a critical thinker who is excellent at getting everybody in the group involved and helping those who need a hand. Her kindness, thoughtfulness, and bubbly spirit uplift all those around her, and she spent this year reading everything from personal narratives, historical nonfiction, and even a book or two on some stock tips that her dad gave her. During her Ramadan fast, she continued to display tenacious work ethic and leadership at all times when other students were not able to. She's also one of a kind in terms of looking for the problems in the world around her and not stopping until she finds the answers. No matter where her interests take her in the future, we have no doubt that she will achieve and persevere.
Hello, I'm John Ruggiero, I'm the Lead Science Teacher over at WSTA. I met Arwa when she was a 6th grader, when Michelle invited her to give a speech at our faculty meeting. And I was just blown away by the poise that she had and just the infectious enthusiasm. Since then, she's rose to crazy heights, being my head TA for two years, being a two-year participant of the Chelsea Research Festival, as well as a two-year participant of Ideas in Medicine, and this year joining the crew for Northeastern's iSuper. She's always on high honor roll, but she's also a kind and gentle leader. Arwa, it could not have been, it must have been difficult to do all these things, however, you never made it look that way. Thank you for making our school a better place, it's been an honor to have had you. Thank you.
If our Principal of Chelsea High School could come up, Mr. Alan Bosley, and is there a teacher with you from Chelsea High School?
We've got a couple representatives.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So, our Chelsea High School Student of the Year is Aked Sanchez Romero.
Hi, everyone, my name's Alan Bosley, I am the interim Principal at Chelsea High School. Real quick note about Angel, when his name was nominated to be the Student of the Year, every person we went to said yes, he is the absolute right person for this award, so it was pretty near, if not unanimous, so, great job. I have here tonight with me Assistant Principal Elias Reynoso and Family Liaison Jay Velaz to say a couple words.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say to Angel, the choice to pick him was an easy one, and I'm glad that I was able to, or we were able to convince everybody else that I was going to nominate someone else, that this is the choice. I spent a lot of time with Angel because he's one of my, he is the president of Casa Unida Club that we started two years ago. It's something that we've been passionate about, and he's always telling me how to improve the school. I also talk to him a lot about what plans are for next year, or what he's planning to do with his life. Right now, he's actually an avid cricket person because he makes t-shirts with me all day long when I'm supposed to be working, so I appreciate the time that I spend with him. I too talk to my son a lot about Angel, so this is the first time he'll know about that, and I actually tell him about the qualities of this young man. My son is 13-years-old, he thinks he knows everything. But Angel is someone that I'm always talking to him about, about the opportunities that Angel has, things that he has to do, and how he's doing them. So I appreciate my time with him, I'm very grateful that I got to know him, and I'm a better person because I know him. So thank you, Angel.
Hello, I'm Jay Velaz, Family Liaison, I think he said everything. I can't believe I sound nervous already, but, four years ago, Angel, quick story, real quick, how much time I have? Three minutes, two minutes, one minute? Okay, thank you. Four years ago, for about five to six weeks, we would go to the second floor and teachers would work out in the morning, do push-ups. Angel would sit there for, with his headphones, always quiet, not truly interacting, for like six weeks, so I find, but we would pound each morning, right? We would pound. Finally, I went up to him and said, "Take off the headphones." "What's your name, Angel? What are you listening to?" "Envy," right? A week later, I go, "Look, I downloaded the playlist." Like, hey, Envy is pretty cool. Long story short, got him involved with parent-teacher conference, volunteering, and he says, "But mister, what am I going to do?" I said, "What you mean you're going to do? You belong to the CHS community." After that, we gave him the bug, we planted the seed. Reynoso and I, we couldn't keep him away. He wanted to volunteer, he became the president. His leadership skills, we seen it mature, and I'm truly proud of you. And this is, when you believe, we treat our kids the same at Chelsea High School, our students, right? I should say students, but to me, they're all my kids. When you plant that seed, and you see it come to fruition, because, mm, okay, you believe in them. And I also learned a lot from you and from Mr. Reynoso, but real quick, all right? Because I didn't know I was going to say something, I'm like, "Well, let me pick up something quick." All right? I got 30 seconds left? Yes, thank you. Angel, may the path you follow surround you with faith and love, today and all your tomorrows. May the spirit that guides you protect you day and night, in all you set out to do. May the path you seek be guided by hope and prayers. Even when you reach the highest peak, remember, even when you reach the highest peak, you keep on. Thank you for allowing me and Mr. Reynoso to be part of your journey and CHS community. Thank you.
I remember Jay telling me about my, a couple years ago. Great. If our Chelsea Opportunity Academy Principal, interim principal, Mr. Ron Schmidt, and any teachers from COA could come up? And our Student of the Year for Chelsea Opportunity Academy is Kevin Mendez.
Good evening, my name is Ron Schmidt, interim Principal of Chelsea Opportunity Academy, and it's my pleasure to present two of our teachers, Saleh Kenan and the one and only very first recipient of the Name, Strength, and Story Award, teacher Max Benford.
Hello, my name is Max Benford. I am a science teacher at the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, and I am pleased to name Kevin Mendez as Student of the Year of COA. So, Kevin joined us in the fall of 2023, needing 32 credits to graduate. This was something that no one had ever done before at COA, but Kevin was determined that he could do it. Over the last two years, Kevin has managed to come to school every day while working 40 hours a week. He has earned 25 credits and is on track to graduate next year while also quickly mastering English. Kevin embodies the spirit of what it means to be a COA student, resilient, determined, and deeply committed to his growth. He has made tremendous strides this year, pushing himself academically, showing up for his peers, and consistently demonstrating the values we hold close as a community. Kevin's positive attitude is infectious, as he takes on every challenge optimistically and does so with Kevin's smile. He's always ready to go. He not only pushes himself to continue growing, but he pushes his peers to continue going as well. When you don't see Kevin focusing on his own work, he's helping his peers around him, whether that may be through academic support or motivational, telling his classmates to always keep going. Kevin is an inspiration to everyone around him, students and staff. Congratulations, Kevin.
And if Ms. Mancini, our Principal from Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy, could come up? You're here. Is there a teacher with you today?
No, there is not.
All right. So our Student of the Year from Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy is Chris Guevara Lemus.
Greetings, Dr. Abey, to school committee colleagues, and most of all, our Students of the Year and families. My name is Meg Mancini, and I'm extremely pleased to present our CVLA Student of the Year 8th grader Christopher Guevara. Chris, you are a Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy Student of the Year. Tonight, we celebrate not just your achievements, but the incredible person that you've grown into before our very eyes. Teachers use words like kind, curious, honest, creative, and intelligent to describe you. Over the past four years that you've been with us, we've had the privilege of watching you grow, not just academically, but as a leader, a thoughtful communicator, and someone who brings energy and heart into every room, whether it's virtual or brick and mortar. You ask tough questions, share your voice with honesty and humor, and show your classmates and teachers what it means to show up fully. Whether you're through your writing, your art, or just your presence, you've made a lasting impact on our community. Thank you for three years of service on our school site advisory council as a student representative. Thank you for your dedication to excellent grades as a consistent, high honor roll student every single term. Thank you for always participating in our suit-up challenges, which are really challenging. Corporate volunteers work with our students online to solve a problem virtually, and then students have to present. It's not an easy thing getting students to participate, but Chris, you are always there with humor and asking if there was an Amazon gift card involved. Thank you for always participating in field trips, after-school movie afternoons where you ate more popcorn and imbibed more hot chocolate than anyone I've ever seen in my whole life. And most of all, participating in your classes. Your keen mind enriches us all. Chris, your next school, the Northeast Vocational Technical School, will be lucky to have you. My heart is really breaking because we're going to miss you so much. We'll miss you more than you know, but we're so proud of you and can't wait to see what's next for you. Keeping exactly who you are, you are the big-brained everything. Congratulations again, Chris, Mr. Guevara, and Ms. Lemus. Congratulations again, Chris, Mr. Guevara, and Ms. Lemus.
I'm going to ask at this time that all the students that received the Student of the Year award come up to take a picture with the school committee. This it? Okay, everybody, let's move on to the next section, which is the retirees. And we will do the same thing we did with the Students of the Year. We'll present the awards, and then we will take the picture with the entire group at the end. Okay? Did everyone hear me? No?
No.
Maybe? It's possible? We're gonna do the same thing we did with the Students of the Year. Once we give the awards out for the retirees, we'll present them with the award. Then we'll take, at the end, we'll call them back up, and we'll take a picture with the entire committee. Okay? Sound good? Okay, Dr. Abay.
Great. So I get to do all of our retirees. So I am going to, we're starting off with Mary Fallis. So Mary, would you like to come up? Okay, Mary, Mary is not here, but I still, because retiring is such a life accomplishment, I am going to read her certificate. Mary has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over 29 years and one month. Mary has been a dedicated assistant cook, baker since 1995 at Chelsea High School and the Williams Middle School. And she has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district and has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism and has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Mary Fallis on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Mary. Our next retiree is Donna Arsenault. Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and read because I do want to honor our retirees. Donna has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over 23 years and 11 months. She has been a dedicated assistant cook, baker, and security guard at the Mary C. Burke Elementary Complex. She has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district and has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism and has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Donna on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. Okay, our next retiree is Antonio Claudio. Our retirees have decided that they have retired. So Antonio has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for 23 years. He has been a dedicated building maintenance man since 2001 at Chelsea High School. Antonio has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. He has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. He has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues through his contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Antonio on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of his retirement. Okay. Our next person is Ramon Ayala. Ramon, you have to come stand up. Otherwise known as Chubby to all of us. And Chubby, before I read, I just want to thank you for your 32 years of service and all that you've done. Our children and our staff love you. Thank you for always being there for us. I know you've driven me and students on many occasions to field trips with students from the high school and just, I've gotten to know you. And I'm gonna miss having you drive us to the State House or to wherever it is that we're going. And I know everyone here knows you, and you're gonna be very missed. But I know it's time for you to retire, and although we don't want you to, I know it's time. So, but thank you. Thank you. Before, I think Anibal has something he wanted to share. Oh, you have to, Anibal, you have to go to the mic.
You ready, Chubby? All right. So I started, I'll make it short. I started at the senior custodian at the high school in 1997, 1998, I'm sorry. Chubby was my employee, and he's been my right hand man ever since. So, so right off the bat, like Chubby knows where everything is. Chubby knows where, I mean, I'm talking like if you can't find something, Chubby, I need this. It's in this closet over here. You know what I mean? So he'd find it in the hobby. So when I became head custodian, he was already, you know, he became the carpenter slash maintenance, whatever. And then he's been my right hand man since then too. So he's always been by my side to guide, to guide me. And he can be a pain in the butt sometimes, but he just has a stubbornness to work. You know what I mean? He doesn't, he doesn't want to stop work. So he helped, he's helped everybody in the system. All my seniors love him. So he's a, he's a great loss in a way that he's always there. He's always there, so. But I wanna, he deserves to be retired. He needs to enjoy himself. So I am gonna miss him like crazy. So his knowledge, his sense of humor, his, even his stubborn pain in the butt stuff. You know what I'm saying? So yeah, I will miss that, you know? You know, I got my new recruits. I got Christian here today. I got Phillip. You know, he's been teaching them like on a nice path on how to make things right. You know what I mean? Helping everybody out, you know, without complaining. You know what I mean? There's a lot of times we gotta work hard. Sometimes, you know, we gotta, we have to go beyond the call of duty. And he's been there. Like you said, the rides to say, I mean, he'll drive you anywhere. He'll pick up anything. He'll come back at midnight to work. He'll do whatever, whatever it takes. You know what I mean? So I will miss him. Love you, Ben.
Thank you. So whereas Ramon Ayala has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for 32 years, and Ramon has been a dedicated building maintenance man since 1993 at the Early Learning Center, Chelsea High School, and district wide, whereas Ramon has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, whereas Ramon has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism, whereas Ramon has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues throughout his contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Ramon Ayala Chubby on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of his retirement. Okay, our next retiree is Susan McKay. Susan, I have, I know Mr. Talbot probably wants to say a few words to you.
Congratulations, Sue. 26 years ago, when I started my teaching career, I was very fortunate to have this person across the hall from me. It was a pleasure learning from her. And then 12 years ago, when I had the privilege of moving up to be an administrator at the Clark Avenue Middle School, we hired Sue as my replacement. And it's been a pleasure having her in our community for those 12 years. Despite being a veteran teacher, she is always willing Despite being a veteran teacher, she is always willing to learn. She is a great role model for our younger staff. She has been a mentor teacher, so she continues to strengthen our teaching profession and she's gonna be missed. So, congratulations, Sue.
I've heard, I've always, every, every time someone has mentioned her name, it's always been, she's an amazing teacher and we're so fortunate to have you and, and have had you for twelve years and I hope you enjoy retirements. So, I'm gonna, let me read your citation. Whereas Susan McKay has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twelve years and nine months. Susan has been a dedicated educator since 2012 at the Maury H. Segal Clark Avenue Middle School. Whereas Susan has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And Susan has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. Whereas Susan has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedicated, dedication to the staff, students, and families of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Susan McKay on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Yes, today's your day. So, I met Ellen, I think Ellen, you, I signed all my paperwork with you when I became superintendent and you were so welcoming and I never forgot how sweet you were to me and helping me navigate when I first got here. But you've done that for a lot of people, a lot of employees that have come through our doors and HR. You're one of the first faces that, that people see in Chelsea Public Schools and you're so welcoming and I'm gonna miss your bubbly energy and HR. No, we're gonna miss your energy. It's bubbly and we love it. So, but I just want to thank you. HR will not be the same without you. It'll probably be a little bit more quieter, but how we love you, Ellen. And I'm, I will definitely miss seeing you on a regular basis. And Chelsea, especially at Central Office, we're kind of small. Here at City Hall, we have a little area and much like the schools, school community, we become like a little family. We celebrate birthdays, we celebrate everything together and we're family. So, we're gonna miss you. Christine, our HR director, would you like to say a few words, Christine?
Hello, Ellen's family. So, Ellen, we never have a dull moment with Ellen. She does the funniest things in the office. I will not mention all of them because some of it she might not want to repeat it, but I was just thinking about when I first started, this is my first director role in Chelsea. I came in 2019 and I didn't meet my team because the hiring committee was other individuals in my team. And so, I get a call from HR and it was Ellen. She's like, you're onboarding time, it's this time, report to this date, on this date, very business. And then she goes, make sure you bring some quarters. And I said, okay, this lady, I don't know how I'm gonna feel. And then I come and meet her and she's part of my team. I was like, okay, okay. So, I realized, all right, I need to earn Ellen's love. It's gonna take some time. And yesterday Ellen came to my office, we were talking about some things and she was just sharing, Christine, I really like you. And I was like, oh, that's so sweet. And she goes, I just don't like everything you do sometimes. So, Ellen keeps it real and we love her. I always say I'd rather have someone be truly honest and real than I don't know what they're thinking. And one thing I also want to just share about Ellen is she really loves her family. I feel like the three children, I feel like I know you since you were, you know, and came into the family. We've seen all, all your birthdays, all the celebrations. She's so proud of her children. She's also proud of her daughter-in-law, her son, and Ellen, we call, we call her our mama bear because she shares the same love with her team. So, Ellen, thank you for all you've done. We feel so cared for and loved. I know Ingrid is really gonna miss you. She calls her her Puerto Rican sister. And Fatima has been adopted, also a Puerto Rican sister. But we are gonna miss you, so thank you for everything and thank you to our family for sharing Ellen with us. We will miss you.
Great. So, congratulations. All right, so what, oh, okay, that's fine, that's okay. So, I'm gonna go ahead and read your citation, Ellen. Whereas Ellen Benson has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over twenty-nine years and ten months. Whereas Ellen has been a dedicated paraprofessional, a principal clerk, administrative assistant, and HR resource specialist since nineteen ninety-four at the John Silver Early Learning Center, the Wright Middle School, Chelsea High School, and Central Office. Ellen has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district and Ellen has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. And Ellen has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Ellen Benson, her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Thank you. Sue, you've been with us twenty-seven years and I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you at the central office level. Ellen is like a mom too, like to all of us, including me sometimes, giving me, not that you could be my mom, but sage advice. But every time I walk in, Almi, how are you doing? And then it's, you should try some macadamia nuts or, no, no, was it Brazil nuts, Brazilian nuts or something. But I never, every time, every year at the high school, we have a college and career fair, and I said this at DLT, I never make it past the front entryway because Ms. Ellen is there greeting everybody and then I stay and I talk to Ellen almost the entire time. I watch the career fair, but I never make it around because I so enjoy my time just talking with Ellen and reconnecting. And so, maybe next year I'll make it through the whole career and college and career fair. But Ellen has also cared deeply about our students and over the years, I know you've, you've, every year there, we have a routine at the end of the year and Ellen will help and support the school counselors with all of the work that they do, with scholarships, helping students get into colleges, and just really supporting all of the work that the school counselors do. And so, Ellen is the, and her team are the team that put together all the data for our high school graduation. They plan a lot of the awards and every year I get a report from Ellen about how many students are graduating, about how many millions of dollars they've earned. And Ellen's like, just give me, can you, like, like I'm getting it together, Almi, I'm getting it together, but every single year I, I get this amazing report from Ellen and I look so forward to it. I don't know who's gonna do that anymore, so I won't know who to call. Can I call you? Maybe you can help? I don't know. So, I'm gonna be at a little bit of a loss at the end of next year, so you'll have to like, okay, okay. But Ellen, I just, I just from the bottom of my heart want to thank you for being not only an amazing school counselor and director of counseling, but my friend. And so, I'm, I'm just so grateful that I've had the opportunity to get to work with you. I've enjoyed every moment of it. And truth be told, I cannot sit at the table at the district learning team meeting. I have, at the beginning of the year, I would sit at the table with Ron, Brenda, and Ellen and then I soon realized that I can't sit there anymore because I will misbehave and talk and get distracted and I'm like, I have to be an example. So, I have self-regulated myself at the last couple of district team, leadership team meetings and sat elsewhere, not because I don't love Ellen and Brenda and Ron and that table, but because I know me as a learner and I have to regulate myself because I will get in trouble. And so, Ellen, I, I'm definitely gonna miss your smile and your just warmth that you bring to the work every single day. And I actually have asked Dr. Jennings to share a few words as well.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. Malik, if you could grab that for me, please. Whew. You can give it to Ms. Ellen. Oh, put it on the floor in front of her. Malik, you can put it, you can put it in the front of her and I'm sorry. I don't want to. So, the name Ellen. Okay, it's nice and heavy, yeah. The name Ellen is most often associated with the meaning bright, radiant, shining light or torch. It is derived from the Greek word, which I won't pronounce in front of Ms. Ellen because I'm gonna pronounce it wrong, but it too means light and is a variant of Helen, the goddess. What Dr. Beta talked about, this radiance, this ability to draw people in, is the light that you carry. I will miss it. You have mothered me since the first day I was placed in the role as your supervisor and I always knew that you had more knowledge than I could walk in at the time, even walk in right now, but you were so kind with me and I believe my job was to walk alongside of you and I would always say to you, whatever I can do to block and tackle, I'm gonna do it. It was a delight and it is a delight. You would be sorely miss, I will miss you. I will miss my mother conversations from you. But as you close this chapter out and go to the next, my only request is that you continue to be the light, to be the torch, to be the radiance that you are, Ellen.
Whereas Ellen Kokanidis has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-seven years and ten months. Ellen has been a dedicated social worker, guidance counselor, school counseling coordinator, and director of school counseling since nineteen ninety-seven at the Kelly School, Chelsea High School, and district-wide. Whereas Ellen has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district and whereas Ellen has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism and whereas Ellen has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedicated, dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Ellen Kokanidis on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement.
At this time, could we have all the retirees that are here come up so they can take a picture together and then with the entire school committee? All the retirees? Bring up your certificate, where's your certificate?
All right.
Okey dokey.
I'd like to make a motion to go out of order and do the Name, Strength, and Story Award next.
I second.
Okay. We're gonna go out of order and do the Name, Strength, and Story Awards.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
All right. Okay. Okay. Great. First, I wanna say thank you to Mr. Thomas for waiting. Thank you. So every school committee, we announce a couple of Name, Strength, and Story Awards. Sometimes it's just one person, sometimes it could be two, but this, this school committee meeting, it is, is one person. And it's our music educator for the middle schools, Mr. Lee Thomas. Lee, I want you to know that your work does not go unnoticed, that we see how amazing you work with all of our middle school bands. And if any of you have ever gone to a middle school performance, you will see how amazing our students grow from beginning band to intermediate to advanced. And by the time they're in advanced band, they are amazing. And then the way you're able to, to do this in just very few short years and the sound, I used, I used to be in band, so like, the sound, it's, you are, and what I, what I'm seeing is when the kids get to high school and they're performing with, at the high school level, I feel like I'm at the symphony by the time they're in high school because the sound is so rich. And you do such an amazing job with all of our students. And you're always at the, you have a lot of performances in the evenings, on the weekends. And oftentimes, the music department, I know, is very busy during weekends, evenings, and and you do it for three schools, not just one. And we are so grateful for the work that you do. You are a talented music instructor, so incredibly talented. And we are so fortunate to have such talents, and it, and it shows. And I've, I have seen the quality of our, our music performances, they are high quality. And I know that starts from elementary to middle to high school, it's, it's the K through 12, it's the, the whole experience. And so I just wanna thank you for what you do every single day. And you give, you came to our district leadership team meeting and had our students perform. And it was beautiful. And every time I go, it is, it is beautiful. And I just, and the, and the selections that you choose for our students, the Star Wars, the, 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 the selections that you use to engage our students, to keep them involved, and music is so important. And I see, I, I see that too. So I just, from the bottom of my heart, wanna say thank you for all that you do and for knowing our students and their strengths. And so I am honored to give you this Name, Strength, and Story Award. Oops, Diana. Okay.
I make a motion to go back in order.
Second. Okay. Yes, yes.
And we have another group of awards that we need to give out.
And so. These are the students, the student awards, Vanessa, Diana, Rosalie, and, and then these are, yeah, two, two more groups, actually, so. Okay. Okay, we can go back in order, okay. That's why, because we can do.
Okay, I ask, who made the motion to go back in order? And who seconded? Okay. Okay, we'll go back in order, we move on to the school committee minutes. I make a, make a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meet, meeting on May 7th, 2025.
Motion.
Make a motion, second.
We'll move on now to public comment. Is there anyone in the group who needs to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent of schools. I'll hand it over back to Dr. Albeta.
Do we have success indicators for today?
Good evening. As you know, I would, success, or indicators of success are connected to our strategic plan, which laid out the five priorities for our school department. Today, I will, tonight, I will be sharing with you our daily attendance, high school dropout, and our mobility rate, which is all connected to our first priority, which is culturally responsive teaching and learning. In grades one through eight, the daily attendance rate for the month of May ranges from 92 to 93 percent. Year to date, it is 91.9, it is 92 percent on an average. For grades nine through 12, the average attendance rate for the month of May is 79 percent. And year to date, it is 81 percent. For our students in kindergarten and pre-K, the average attendance rate for the month of May is 90 percent. And year to date, it is also 90 percent. For our high school dropout rate, the number of students who have dropped out thus far is 77, when compared to last school year of 23, 24, at 134. That is a difference of 57 students. The percentage of dropout rate from last school year was 7.24 percent. Today, it is 4.21 percent. That's a huge difference of 3 percent. So we are keeping and sustaining our students despite the challenges we are currently facing. For our mobility rate, at the ELC, we've had four students in, three students out, so we were able to retain one student. At the elementary level, we had nine students in, 10 students out, which is a difference of one. At the middle school level, we've had seven students in, two students out, that's an increase of five. At the high school level, nine students in, 14 students out, that is a difference of five. The district total for May, 29 students in, 29 students out, we are neutral. However, the total mobility rate from September to current, we've had 723 students in, 578 students out, that is a difference of 145 students. In the fall, Dr. Albeta will share academic outcome. As the data becomes more ready, we're currently serving students, but the data is really looking amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tamara Blake Canty. Okay, so for our personal, personnel updates, because it's the end of the year, we're not, we are, have not been doing a lot of hiring, but we've, of the hires that we have hired, we have hired 50 percent Caucasian, 50 percent Hispanic, and then our enrollment for, as of six-two, is at 6,101,112. So I would like to commend these two reports for the record. And that completes my report. And we'll have our student reports, our last Chelsea Height, our last student reports for the year, as we say goodbye to our amazing student reps.
Apologies. Good evening, Madam Chemo Menendez, Superintendent, Superintendent Dr. Albeta, and the rest of the school committee members. I hope everyone has been having, has been enjoying spring and the arrival of summer. I would like to start by sharing some updates from the high school. Apologies. On May 19th, Chelsea High School had a ceremony for the seal, seal of, by letter C, where more than 50 students received a seal of belligerency and four students received the seal of belligerency with distinction. Congratulations to them and their families. Yesterday, June 4th, Chelsea High School held, held its senior awards ceremony. Awards from the Department of English, Visual Arts, Performing Arts, History, Science, Music, and Math were awarded to seniors who displayed a great contribution and achievements in said departments. I would also like to politely brag that I got the award for the math department. At the senior awards ceremony, scholarship winners were also announced, and students who attended got, were given a medal. And those who couldn't attend will be receiving their medals either at practice, I mean, receive their medals either at practice, graduation practice today or tomorrow, or at graduation before graduation starts. Speaking of graduation practices, students are expected to attend both practices, but only need to attend, attend at least one to be able to go to graduation. Not graduation. Graduation will be Saturday, June 7th, and will start 10:00 a.m. Seniors need to get, be in school by 8:30 a.m. And everyone is invited and welcome to go here for the class of 20, for the class of 2025 graduates. And that's, that part, but there's more.
For our second section of this part, of our part, we would like to present our legacy project to the board members. This project we put together, unfortunately, our other student rep, Vanessa, wasn't able to make it today. But we'll start off by talking about her section that she wrote. She wrote, "My name is Vanessa Lopez, and I grew up in an immigrant household surrounded by the lost dreams of those who came before me. Despite this, I stand here today proud of the progress I've made in becoming the person I've always dreamt of being. I have always been a motivated student eager to..." I have always been a motivated student eager to explore the luminous possibilities education offers. Many describe me as confident and I agree. I never, I'm never afraid to stand out or dim my light for no one, as my mom says. When I was in elementary school, I was just a kid who really liked school. I grew up in a home where things weren't always easy, but my family always tried, told me to try my best and never give up. And to always look into my heart when coming for dreams." Even back then, I liked raising my hand in class and being a part of things I wanted to do. Well, not just for me, but for my family too. I knew school was important and I always made the most of it. Elementary school was where I started to believe in myself and I didn't know what the future would hold in front of me. And then to announce where she would be going to school, she would be going to school to UMass Boston. And for our second part. And Diana will give her portion of the presentation.
Okay, it's me again. I would also like to share my story with Chelsea Public Schools. My name is Diana Salinas Garcia, and I was born, born in El Salvador. I moved to the United States at the end of third grade. Before entering the Chelsea Public School system, I was attending, apologies. I was attending school in East Boston. I sh- I attended the Boston Public Schools for three and a half years before moving to Chelsea. I changed schools in seventh grade, two weeks before we went into a global pandemic, and never saw my new classmates until online school in eighth grade. Apologies again. I have to confess, I never attended school class after the two-week break got extended. And to be honest, I didn't know we had class. I still don't know if we had classes we needed to attend, but I do promise I did all my work that was ever posted on Google Classroom. The great thing was that I would pass onto eighth grade. I didn't think I would, but I did. And going to eighth grade through a computer screen was not what I expected my last year of middle school to be, to look like. Although I never attended in-person school in eighth grade, I was able to make many friends and fit into my online group perfectly. Everyone did their best to make the most out of ours, our cir- circumstances, and that was enough for me to succeed. And I'll be attending Amherst College next year.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chairwoman Hernandez, Dr. Albeda, and to the rest of the school committee members. For my portion of the presentation, I'll be talking about my experience through high school. To start off, my name is Rosalia Hernandez, and many of my close family members and friends know me as Leah. Before I dive in, I would like to give background about myself. I come from a family full of doctors and nurses from El Salvador, and I will confess they are the foundation of my motivation, and because of them, I push myself every day. I have been lucky to be born, or to have been born, to two amazing, loving parents who have always prioritized, um, both my education and my happiness. They enrolled me into Brook Charter School, and that's where my academic journey began, where I met many friends and especially teachers who are really unforgettable and one of a kind. But unfortunately, their location changed, and so I transferred to CHS. First going into CHS, I was quite nervous. I had never been in such a large school before and with so many students around me. At the beginning of my freshman year, I often felt lost and unsure of myself. And I was placed in some slim classes that I didn't feel I was ready for, and, but I was hesitant to speak up because I didn't want to seem like I was trying to stand out. Or, so I quieted down and decided to blend in. But it wasn't until my sophomore year when I joined my first AP class that things started to really change. I found a group of friends that I wouldn't trade anything for. They're still my friends today, and I hope to carry them with me throughout my whole life. They really brought out the studious version of me again, and they made me really care about my academics, which led me to reach out to the resources that CHS offered, included internships and programs. One of my fondest memories is actually doing an internship for the Harvard Museum, where I was able to create an exposition and, about myself and present it. And then feeling so confident, I enrolled into more classes, AP classes, my junior year, where I really found my groove again, both academically and personally. I got more involved in the community, I had a full schedule, where I did Libya of the Scholars with Diana, we both did National Honor Society. I would do guitar lessons on my own and many more things. Lastly, my senior year is definitely probably one of the most unforgettable years of my life. I was definitely excited about the college process and haven't had one of the best summers ever. Sadly, at the beginning of it, um, my dog that I had since I was one had passed away. And it was a heartbreaking moment for both me and my parents. But despite the loss, we made beautiful memories on camping trips, where it was filled with beautiful sunsets, and it just reminded us of him, and we smiled. And, um, that same summer, I was invited to a two-day Women in STEM training in California Institute of Technology. And thanks to my parents, they were able to fly me out to California with them. And I got to hear Katie Bowman speak about her experience capturing the first black hole image. And that was truly the moment where I realized I was meant, or I really wanted to pursue a career in astrophysics, just like her, and so then starting off senior year, I faced many different types of rejections, and I didn't get exactly what I had planned for originally. But I never lost faith and I stuck to the idea that whatever is meant to happen is meant to happen, and I believe the path that I'm walking on right now is the one meant for me. Looking ahead and forward with all that, I'm proud to announce that I'll be attending UMass Boston in the fall, where I'll be studying engineering physics. There, I hope to move on to graduate school where hopefully I can attend Caltech and, um, maybe, and that then become the astrophysicist that I aspire to be. To the younger students listening today or maybe tuning in later, I hope they take these stories of encouragement from all three of us that, um, although things may not go your ware, your way, and there's many bumps in lives, don't let your experiences define you, let yourself define those experiences. And there is never a right time to work towards your goal. It's always important to start now and to, because your future self will definitely thank you later. And finally, I would like to say thank you to all the board members here, and especially Ms. Knight, Dr. Jennings, my guidance counselor, Ms. Lawrence, and so many more administrators I can't even list, like it would be so long, who have supported me throughout my four years at CHS and who have truly made me feel, or have brought out the best version of me and are here supporting me, and I'm honored to have the ability to speak here and represent our school and come every month and give our updates on what's going on at CHS. And I also want to thank my friends who have done a lot for me and, um, have been truly supportive. And, um, also, last but far from least, I would like to thank, um, my mom and my dad, who have been, um, sorry guys. Who have supported me every step of the way, and, um, I'm really happy that they're able to see me both, girl. And, um, sorry. And, um, I will continue to succeed and be the best person that I can be for them and for my family, and, um, most importantly, myself. So, thank you. So yeah, to end it, thank you, thank you so much for, um, listening to our presentation. And we all are extremely grateful for the support.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, um, we have a little certificate of appreciation for our school committee student members. Our first student is, uh, Rosalia Hernandez. Rosalie, we just want to thank you for always coming and being so well-prepared and just sharing, um, as you have from your heart and, um, just being and representing the class of twenty-five so well. Thank you. So we have a little certificate for you, um, and, and a little gift. And then for Di- Diana, um, thank you as well for coming and, and sharing detailed reports of all that is happening in our community and at Chelsea High School. You've done an amazing job as a school committee student rep, and we're so fortunate to have, um, have both of you. And the, what you have contributed, I, I have thoroughly enjoyed your reports. And sometimes your reports are so thorough that at the end, I don't have any announcements because you guys, because the two of you have already made them, so I don't have to do it, which is really nice. So I really enjoyed that, and I do, um, wish both of you all, all the best as you go to college at UMass Amherst and at UMass Boston. Amherst College, I apologize, yes. And so, um, again, I just want to say thank you, and I know we'll see you on graduation day. I do have a certificate for Vanessa as well, and, um, we will, we'll give that to her a little bit later. So we just have a little. And then we have another certificate for, um, Alicia, Alicia Ariana, who has, uh, been, uh, super supportive. And, um, we, we know that you've been here at every single school committee meeting with, with your daughter. And, uh, we just wanted to appreciate you and say thank you for coming and being engaged and supporting our students and supporting your daughter. We, it did not go unnoticed, and, um, just thank you for being here every single school committee meeting as well, so. Of course. And then, we're also, um, thank you, Dr. Jennings. Can we get a picture of the student reps together and then Ma- Mom and Rosalie and then school committee?
I don't know if it's gonna help me, but.
Oh, I didn't even notice, I'm so sorry.
It's allergies, so I don't know if it's gonna help, but I saw them and I'm like, Johnny, can I?
She's like.
As a hacker belongs.
She's like, I want one.
I'm like, Johnny, can I have one? Thank you.
I'm sorry, my gosh, you're hot. Even with this, I won't give this all to you.
Okay, guys, come on.
Okay. Okay. And. Our, our last award, um, let's see, oh, this is Vanessa. I was getting confused, we did this, okay, our last award, um, is actually, every school committee meeting, we have, uh, a staff member who has to be here throughout the entire school committee, who greets everybody at the front and then stays till the last person leaves. So she's like, could you please hurry up, and she never complains. So, uh, we'd just like to say thank you to Gendry Elmo- Elmushin. In recognition of your consistent dedication and warm hospitality, greeting every attendee and ensuring the doors were always open, you helped create a welcoming space where every meeting could begin with purpose. So we just wanted to say thank you.
Come on, guys.
And that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Albeda. I'd like to make a motion to commend the committee reports.
Motion. Second.
Okay. We're gonna move on to new business. Today, we're gonna try the new consent agenda. I'm going to read the items, um, and we're gonna do one roll call at the end to approve them. As I read each item, if somebody has a question, I will pause after each item in case anyone has a question or anything they'd like to bring up before I move on to the second. Okay, and then when we go to make the roll call, if anybody has a, a problem with any of them, we will address them at that time, okay? First item is consideration and action to accept five thousand dollars from the Boston University Consortium Council for, um, for years two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six. Does anyone have any questions or need any further explanation before we move on to the second item? To the next item? No? Next item is consideration and action to accept twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars in private grant funds from the One Eight Foundation to support civic engagement at the middle schools over three- at the middle schools over three years. Does anyone have any questions or need any further explanation? Moving on, consideration and action to accept $70,800 in private grant funds from the 1A Foundation to support the Investigating History Program at the middle schools over three years. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Consideration and action to accept $106,500 in private grant funds from the 1A Foundation to support the middle schools' Open SIAED over three years. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Consideration and action to accept $3,913.28 from the University of Massachusetts for the SNAP Outreach Plan for the year 2025. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. Consideration and action to accept $52,700 from the HESIA Fund for physical, for school year 2025 to 2026. Any questions?
What is this grant for? It doesn't say in the agenda.
The HESIA Fund has been so generous over the last couple of years to fund our BCC, which is our Boston Children's Choir After School. So they are funding that, but then we are also adding another component. And it's the Individual Student Success Planning. And it's going towards our navigators. And so that's what our HESIA friends are giving to us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Next item is consideration and action to accept a gift from Santa Club. Why, I just went blank on that. Santa Club of Chelsea of 12, $50 market basket gift cards totaling $600. Any questions, further explanations? Next item, consideration and action to accept a gift of hygiene products from Hope &amp; Comfort for district-wide students with a total value of $66,516. Any questions? Next item, consideration and action to authorize the prepayment of up to $2.5 million in special education out-of-district tuition fees for fiscal year 2026. Any questions about this item?
I have a question, so it says here that the first time we did one of these prepayments, was it in 2020? Is that, is that right? And but this year, it has gone down a lot from what we've done in previous years. Is that what you said earlier? Do you think we're gonna be able to continue doing this in the future?
I apologize. I don't know, it just, it depends on what our budget forecast is going to be. And I, I know for next year, we might be able to just a little bit. And I can't, I don't know what the future holds with our federal funding and stuff. So I don't, I can't say.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions? Next item, consideration and action to authorize a multi-interdepartmental budget transfer of $4,080,642.31 for a year-end cleanup to help reallocate or fund other district accounts. Any questions? Next item, consideration and action to approve approve an overnight and out-of-state field trip. Actually, I'm going to stop at the last item and let's do a roll call. Since the items after this do not pertain to money. Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motions carry. Thank you. Next item will be consideration and action to approve an overnight and out-of-state field trip for one Chelsea High School student athlete and two chaperones to attend the Nike Outdoor Nationals in Hayward Field, Oregon from June 18th to June 20th. Any questions? No? Next item is Dr. Neville moves to accept and adopt the district bullying policy and plan for school year 2025, 2026. Do we need any explanation or have any questions for this?
I think that we just wanted, I'd like to quickly explain that we discussed this at our subcommittee. And correct me if I'm not explaining this right, but I understand that it's required by law that we review this this every year. And I don't think we had any significant changes or any changes at all to it this year. So we're approving the previous plan.
Thank you. Next item. Dr. Neville moves to accept and adopt the district student handbooks for 2025, 2026. Would you like to say something also about this or no? Okay. That ends our items and if you could get a roll call for the last items that we read?
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
And Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative and one absent.
In the affirmative, one absent, motions carry. Okay, that ends the new business sector and we will move on to announcements. Does anyone have any announcements they would like to make at this time?
I have one from Member Cabral.
Okay.
This is from Member Cabral, who cannot be here tonight. As the out-large member of the Chelsea School Committee, I am so proud of all our graduates. And while I am unable to present at tonight's meeting, I wanted to share a couple of words with the class of 2025. Graduation for many of us is a culmination of all our triumphs and low points during this journey. We have the privilege as pioneers as we navigate uncharted waters of higher education, career, and the workforce. But know that your accomplishments, growths, and potential are recognized. We are one of the first in our families to reach this point in our journey. And we are planting a seed to continue a legacy. It is a radical act to exist in spaces that were not made for people that look like you and I. It is a testament every time you raise your voice and speak your truth unapologetically. I wholeheartedly believe that is, that the best is yet to come. Let positivity, gratitude, and power guide us through the challenges that may come and let us practice who we want to be now. Congratulations to the class of 2025.
Thank you, that was beautiful. Anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make? No? I want to congratulate all of our students, all of our seniors. I think Ms. Cabral said pretty much what we all feel and what, how we all feel towards all of our students and whatever their choice is in life, be proud of it. Move forward, your head up high and never, never be ashamed of who you are or how you look or where you came from. Don't ever allow anyone to make you feel like you don't belong. I wish everyone a wonderful, healthy, safe summer. Please, 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 please stay safe. Please do not put yourself in any position that can get you in any sort of trouble or draw any type of negative attention to yourself. We will conquer this time that we're in and we will come out on top. But we need to be smart and we need to think about how we act and what we do. Because the consequences unfortunately are very, very negative. I wish you all the best from the bottom of my heart and I thank you so much for allowing me to be, to lead this group for this year, for this school year. And I will see the seniors at graduation Saturday. I'm sorry, hold on. Claudia has something to say.
Yes, sorry, thank you. Very quickly, I almost forgot and I just realized that this is our last meeting before we break into the fall. So if you have children that take the bus, I know that the bus placements went out. And I believe the deadline to return, whether you want a bus placement or not, is on June 13th. So I would say pay attention to those forms and any type of subsequent forms for the schools. Obviously, we have Parent, the Parent Square and you know, it's still very early to be thinking about the fall. But we will be sending, you know, just reminders via Parent Square emails and other stuff. So while we do gear up for summer school, I know that the topic of conversation is as the fourth graders are transitioning to the middle schools, keep in mind that some of the, from kindergarten, some of our schools at the complex are gonna have uniforms, some of our middle schools are uniformed. So I would hate for some parents to just, you know, over the summertime, you know, say, hey, I purchased, you know, clothing and now there's uniforms. Our middle schools, two of our middle schools have uniforms, one does not. So be, oh, actually now all three do. So be mindful of that, pay attention to the placements. And you know, if you have any inquiries, definitely the Parent Information Center and continue to reach out, so. Aside from that, I would, you know, as Anna mentioned, wish everyone a very happy summer. We are here for you guys should you need us. And Parent Square emails and field days. And there's still tons of activities and summer programs to look forward to. So I do thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's it, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion to adjourn?
I will second it.
Thank you. Thank you very.